Welcome to the San Clemente Podcast, the only local podcast in the best beach town in the world. We're here to bring you weekly episodes highlighting everything from sports, culture, entertainment, politics, and everything else this place has to offer. Steve's like, is that good?
Have a wimpy clap there.
Steve's adapting so well, though, to the, to the new era of how people are consuming content. You really are, right? Because in the past, it was probably mainly newspaper outlets and newspaper mediums.
And they control everything and they had total editing control.
Yeah, exactly. And that's tricky, but it's awesome to see kind of the evolution of new content being created. And I don't know if we're still on the forefront of it, but it's fun. It's exciting.
Citizen journalists, different points of view. It's all good.
Exactly. I was watching a news outlet last night and they were saying how Mark Wahlberg is moving out of LA because basically he's moving to Nevada because you can create content from anywhere. Whereas in the past, you had to live in Hollywood.
Had to be by the studio.
You had to be by the studio. Yeah. So that's pretty exciting.
Nevada, Florida, Montana.
Yeah, exactly. So tell us your name again.
Steve No Block.
Okay. And talk to us a little bit about how long you've been on the city council and...
I came to San Clemente about 21 years ago.
Okay.
And I've been active in local government for most of my life. I started out when I was in college and law school as an intern at the Orange County Board of Supervisors. And got involved in local government and enjoyed it. And over the years, I've served on multiple committees and commissions in local government in Orange County and San Diego County. And we moved to San Clemente about 21 years ago.
Okay.
I saw the local politics and how things were going in the city. And I sort of got a sense that there was sort of an anti-business mindset. And it bothered me a little bit. And I've decided to run. I've served historically on the Orange County Civic Center Commission, served on the County Assessment Appeals Board. I was the chairman of the San Diego County Assessment Air Pushing Control District. It was a swing vote to dredge the San Diego Harbor four feet deeper for the US Dennis could come into port there. And when I first decided to run, I'd only been in town five years. And people said, you haven't been in town long enough.
And no prior political, you weren't like no prior council?
No, no elected, no elected official. Well, I was elected to the San Diego County Central Committee, Republican Central Committee. And I served as first vice chair of the, of the Central Committee in San Diego County for a number of years before I moved to San Clemente.
Got it.
But I've been involved in appointing, appointed positions in
Got it.
Local government.
So what brought you to San Clemente? You said 21 years ago, you moved to San Clemente.
I took the job in Irvine. And my wife was a teacher in San Diego and Irvine, the communities in South Orange County were sort of in the middle for the commute. And I'd always loved San Clemente. My mind's eye would see that Big Dip and by the Denny's sign. And so I was looking at that area for, for homes. And we found a home in Tolega and decided this would be a great place to live. I'd never, I'd lived inland all my life.
Yeah.
And had to commute to the beach. So the thought of living at the beaches was really wonderful.
That's amazing. And where were you commuting to? Up in Irvine?
Up in Irvine. Right, right. From San Diego. And so San Clemente was, was convenient, close, and it had the charm and beauty of this wonderful beach town. So we came.
Crazy. A lot of people thought that it was so far away, right? And back in the day, you just had the five freeway that took you down. But I remember, maybe early, yeah, early 2000s, I worked up off of El Toro Road for Washington Mutual. And people would come in all the time and be like, you live way down in San Clemente? What's, what's down in San Clemente? What do you even do in San Clemente? So it was kind of that hidden gem. And that's amazing that you found it.
Yeah, it's, it's really wonderful. And it's interesting, when I, when I thought I would run for council, people said, you can, you can never do it. You're running against someone that a local elementary school was named after her dad, Chamber of Commerce President, third generation San Clemente, you can't win. But I'd been involved in, in local elections for decades. And when I signed up to run, we had all the endorsements of the legislators. We had raised more money than anyone else had in the history of the city of San Clemente for city council race. And two weeks before the election, I'm driving down Hermosa and I exit it. And, and there's a highway patrol stop on the side of the road. And there's a man that he's interviewing by his car. And the cars are inching around him and I inch around him. I look in my rearview mirror and the police officer's wrestling with this guy. And now they're fighting and they're down on the ground wrestling. So I stopped my car, got out and helped the police officer, helped this guy. One other fellow in his car stopped as well. So two civilians helped this guy. He'd obviously on drugs, crazy, crazed out of his mind. So we're holding this guy down. And I said, the officer, what do you need to, you know, what else do you, what do you want us to do? And he said, well, I gotta get my straps out of the car to hogtie this guy. Could you hold him? I said, he didn't go anywhere. Just, so we held him down. He hogtied the guy. 30 seconds later, another CHP comes and the thing's over. The whole incident took 90 seconds.
Yeah.
And so there's a little article in the paper about how two local guys are going to get commended for helping the CHP arrest this guy. So for two weeks, while I'm knocking on doors and handing out my flyers, people are saying, aren't you the guy that helped that police officer? And so, and the day of the election, I'm passing on flyer, Trader Joe's. And lady comes out, hand her a flyer. And she says, oh yeah, No Block. I voted for you. I said, really? Why did you vote for me? Well, you're the guy that helped that police officer. So, but for that stop, I might not have gotten elected the first time to the city council.
The heroism of helping someone out.
Well, people seem to remember that.
Yeah. And like you said, it was a quick 90 second thing. Right? Just like that. Done.
Yeah. And not only that, I missed the exit. I had intended to exit as Strela and ended up going past it to Hermosa where it
Yeah. That's kind of marketing at its finest. Who would have ever thought? Crazy. Wow, wow, wow. That's amazing. So does that still ring true today? You said, when you had first moved to town, the perception was essentially that you cannot get elected, or it's going to be very difficult to get elected because you had just moved to San Clemente?
Yep.
Does that still ring true today?
No, I don't think so. I think over time, that was, that was 15, 16 years ago. So I think, you know, people are aware of what's happening locally.
Yeah.
I've been involved in the community. People seem to know who I am now. At the time, it was, it was a little different.
Yeah.
But you know, campaigns are, we got 65,000 people in town and, and everybody doesn't know, all the, all the candidates. We have 12 people running now, 10 actively. And people don't know that. If you have a circle of friends, you may know 50, 100 people, but there's 60,000 people that may never have heard of you. So, so a campaign is important and you have to go through the mechanics of letting people know who you are and what you stand for.
Now, did you put together a strategy for the campaign? Or what's the?
Well, the strategy is basically to get your name in front of people. And you do that through print media, through electronic media, through, through civic activities, through, you know, contacting people, you know, from your business, from your, from your neighborhood, from your church, from your, from your civic associations.
Yeah. So basic business marketing.
Basic business marketing. Absolutely.
People take it out, you know, they, they take it probably a little bit too far, a little bit too easy. But yeah, basic business marketing. Keep your, keep your name in front of people, right? Tell them what you told them. Tell them, keep telling them the same message over and over again.
Exactly. You know, we have a society that's kind of, sort of divided now. There's this left and right mentality. And it's, it's a, it's a big issue now than I think it used to be.
Do you think COVID had anything to do with that? Because I feel like when COVID had hit, at least in our community where we live, the divisiveness was pretty clear. You either stood on one side or another. And if you didn't agree with someone's opposition side, I saw relationships get dismantled over COVID. So did that have anything to do with it? Or was it kind of going in that direction?
Well, I think, yeah, I think it was kind of going in that direction, you know, with, with the election of Trump. It was the left and the right, you know, the, and it was pretty severe and pretty strong. And COVID just amplified it. So
Kind of brought it to surface a little bit more, yeah.
The mindset of, are these vaccines really helping? Is it a vaccine? Well, it's not really a vaccine, but, but if you take it, you know, you're gonna get well? Well, it said you could avoid COVID, but not only did you not avoid it, you're the one that actually got COVID. And that's, you know, that upset a lot of people. But, but the message continued that you have to get the shot. You have to stay indoors. You have to lock down. And, you know, unfortunately, that destroyed a lot of small businesses. And, and people look back now and say, wow, the kids were not at risk. People were not at risk. And the people that are healthiest and have natural immunities are now are fine. And people that don't are having myocarditis, sports people are dropping dead on the, on the sports field and on stage. And people are going, what's going on? Why are all these young people dropping, you know, dropping like flies? What, what's going on?
Yeah.
And people like Robert Kennedy Jr. And others are, are speaking out. And of course, they're getting shut down, but they're speaking up. And it's, it's, so you pick a side. I believe it. I don't believe it. Is it misinformation? Is it not misinformation? And that goes to all the local issues from voter integrity, issues to, to development issues in a small town like San Clemente.
Yeah. But you know, you used to be able to sit down with someone that had an opposing point of view, right? And have a conversation and, you know, agree to disagree. You could typically come together and still remain friends or continue to have a relationship. Not anymore. I mean, maybe, and maybe it will come back around. Like, how do we bring that back together where you get that sense of community? How do we bring people back together?
Well, I think you have to be willing to enter into a conversation and talk about it. A lot of people aren't willing to talk about it on both sides. But I think civility's important. And, and the more we engage in that, the better off we are.
Yeah, exactly. I think San Clemente, too, to segue, is such an amazing beach community where people want to have that sense of, they want to have that sense of a tight knit community. And it's such a sensitive topic because we all want that too. But it is, like you said, there's 65,000 people here. So, you know.
Well, we, but we all love the same thing. We're here because it's a, you were born here.
Yeah.
You didn't have a choice.
Yeah.
But those of us that moved here, moved here for a reason because it's a beautiful town. We love the beach. We love the water. We're here for that reason. We wouldn't want to live anywhere else. The weather's great. The scenery's great. The, the streets are, are maintained. There's a great quality of life. We love that. And we all, we all have that in common. And we're going to continue it.
Absolutely. Absolutely. It is. It's, I've always said, it's the best place in the world to live. And I truly believe that. There's no better place in the whole world. And yeah, you see people fleeing Hollywood and Los Angeles and certain parts of California. But when you look at those places, they're not so great. I would flee there too. But there's no place like San Clemente. It truly is the best place in the world.
No question.
One of the things that makes it so special is the beaches. And I know that that's a hot topic, especially on the coastline of South San Clemente. You've got massive erosion. You've got railroads that are, I don't even think, running at this point. What's your take on that?
Well, the, the beaches unfortunately eroding. We love our beaches. But over years, when San Juan Creek got developed, all of our sand came out of the creek. And then they built Dana Point Harbor, which impacted the sand flow. And then you have inland development, parking lots, streets, which reduced the amount of sand that blew into the creek to blow out onto the beach and, and migrate south onto our beaches. That all happened. And over the years, it, it took a toll. The problem is, what do we do about it now? And, you know, we have a mindset, unfortunately, of environmentalism where you can't touch anything that's nature because you'll, you'll harm a bug, a twig, a species that someone didn't know even existed there, of a plant of some kind. And, you know, we could solve the beach problem very easily. But, but we run up against the bureaucracy and the environmentalists. For example, the city of Dubai built their entire city on, on sand that was blown up, rainbowed from the, from the bottom of the ocean up onto the beach that piled up the beach. And they built a beautiful, world-class, world-renowned city. We could have a dredger come up and down the coast, taking the sand that used to be on our beach that's now 40 yards off, sitting, migrating slowly south and north, depending on the season. We could take that same sand and blow it up on the beach. But instead, we have a bureaucracy that says, well, let's, let's analyze that. Let's get an environmental impact report. No, we don't want to take that sand because you might, let's take the sand from, from the oceanside harbor. We'll dredge the harbor and take that sand up there. And 20 years later, 20 years later, we're still talking about it. Newport Beach, by contrast, said, look, we're gonna, we're gonna take the sand from the Santa Ana River and we're gonna put it on, on trucks. And we're gonna load it to our beach. And they have truckloads every day coming to the beach. We could have those same trucks drive 20 miles farther and drop it on our beach. But everyone's saying, we'll let the bureaucracy handle it.
Is it everybody that's saying that? Or is that just the political side? Because you're right. That you're telling me the red tape is getting involved.
It's phenomenal, phenomenal. And we have, we have, we have a mindset that says, let's let the Army Corps of Engineers, the State Parks Department, and the, and the bureaucrats handle the problem. And 20 years later, we're still waiting for sand, which might happen next year. It might not. And we need quick solutions. As you said, San Clemente's focused on the beach. No question about it.
It's a beach town.
I recommended, as a city council member, I said, look, this is, this is what we're all about in this town. Let's, let's take the resources. We have 150 employees. Let's take one of them and make them laser focused on the beach, on sand replenishment.
Yes.
And there was the response of my colleagues on the council was, well, no, let's not do that. Let's, let's spend $5,000 a month. Why hire lobbyists in Washington to, to knock on the door of, of the federal bureaucrats? We have led, we have, we have senators, congresspeople that can knock on any doors and get us appointments anytime we want. We don't need consultants and lobbyists to do that. We need someone laser focused on sand replenishment. Now in, unfortunately, in Cypress Shore and South, South County, their beach is gone. But they have, that problem's compounded by a 10,000 year old ancient landslide that right on the edge of the bluff, right before the beach.
Yeah, very familiar with it.
That's moved, that's begun to move. And the tracks below that have begun to move. And, you know, the OCTA, the Orange County Transit Authority, their, their response was, well, let's put 20,000 tons of riprap next to the train tracks to shore up the train tracks.
Yeah.
But what's holding the train tracks was the sand that was on the beach below the train tracks. No one addressed the sand at all.
Gosh.
And the homeowners were, said, well, we're gonna put 120 pylons into the sand to keep the earth from moving. That'll stabilize the problem. Unfortunately, that landslide continued to move. And even after 20,000 tons of riprap was dropped on the beach, the track is now moving again. So the, as you mentioned earlier, the trains have been shut down. There's no passenger rails going through there. And the commercial rails that do go, they inch through like, like, like
Very slow.
Caterpillars through there.
Yeah.
And now their response is, instead of replenishing the sand, which could be easily done, blown up with a dredge at a very low cost.
Even in Cypress Shores, in that area right there?
Even in Cypress Shores, you could take the sand that's moving south and, and depending on the season, and blow that sand back up on the beach. But their response again is, we're gonna do 700 metal anchors into the, into the bedrock to stabilize that. Instead of doing that and thinking about the sand. Part of the issue there also is that that beach, part of it is a, is a private beach. So the governmental entities said, well, we don't touch private beach because we don't want to help those people that have access to a portion of their beach privately. Well, you know, the mindset needs to shift. We made, we need to focus on sand.
Yeah.
We don't do it. We, we, we let the bureaucrat. You have to be a squeaky wheeling government.
Yeah, you do.
Because government goes slow. And unless you're pounding on the door and saying, we need to fix this right now, they're just gonna say.
Yeah. Well, Cypress Shore is a perfect example of that. I've watched it erode over the last, you know, umpteen years with no action. At what point, and it's sad, unfortunately, you've had homes get red taped because there's massive cracks that have basically taken, you know, have destroyed them.
Yep.
At what point, you have a beautiful park, an incredible area, it's just, it's gone. And it's been gone for two years. If you could see a couple of years to the future, what do you think? Is that gonna get rectified? Or does it depend on who gets elected? Or, you know, like, how do you cut the red tape to get through that, to bring a resolution to the table?
It does matter on who gets elected. Because if you elect people that have a mindset that says, we're gonna let the bureaucrats handle it. We have an application. Let's let the Army Corps of Engineers spend the next 20 years doing it. Or you could have a mindset of someone who was elected who says, let's, let's push, let's push a little bit harder. Let's make an application for a dredger that we don't even have. The Stuvessent vessels in San Francisco, it could be down here next week pumping sand.
Who makes that decision? Is it the city council members that come together?
The city council makes the decision. But we, we don't have jurisdiction over the mean high tide water going, going west. That's the Army Corps of Engineers. The mean high tide going east inland, that's the California Coastal Commission. But this is what we could do. We could make an application for a dredging operation for San Clemente contracted out to other cities that have the same beach erosion problems we do. And make the application. If you build it, they will come. If you say, let's do a permit for a dredger. Where's your dredger? We don't have one. But if you give us permission to do it, there'll be 50 guys in line to build a dredger, to get the contract, to move that sand. But no one wants to do that. People, it's like someone, it's too complicated for, for a lot of people. So they said, let's just let, let's let, let the experts handle it. And believe me, the experts are in no flicking hurry.
No, they're not. They don't care. Right? Their plates are full.
Their plates are full. The Army Corps of Engineers is working on projects all over the country. This is only their priority. When someone bangs on their door and says, what are you doing for San Clemente? Let's get on the stick here.
Yeah, exactly. Wasn't there an emergency? Isn't that what kind of brought it to the service?
There was an emergency permit now because of the rail movement. And that's, the rail there is a national transportation corridor in a, in a sensitive area militarily and economically.
Yeah.
So because the tracks were moving, the, the authority there said, well, we're gonna get an emergency permit.
Wow.
But it's no emergency when you lose your beach.
No. I mean.
The mindset of the coastal commission is, we have organized retreat. We, we have managed retreat of the beach. Their mindset is, if, if it, if the beach erosion bumps into people, people have to give way. And my mindset is just the opposite. Wait a minute. If the beach bumps into people, we're gonna do something about the beach to protect the beach and to protect people. You know, we, the other day, the city council did a, a grant plan to study the natural, the natural beach erosion issue. And I said, look, people are part of nature. You know, when you're looking at, at, at a nature response, we are part of nature. We're here, just like the birds and the bees.
That's it.
And, and birds and the bees don't hang out on the beach intentionally. We do. And that ought to be important to people. So that's my, that's my thinking on it.
Yeah, no. And that's a great point. Pivoting a little bit, talk to me about the city attorney and currently what's going on? Because is that BBK? Is that the firm?
Best Bested Krieger. It's a inland empire-based firm. Has been doing the city's legal work for about seven, eight years.
Okay.
And we went from about 300,000 a year in legal fees to literally 12 million dollars over the last seven, eight years with the BBK. Now, there've been some big issues like the toll road, which we successfully stopped. But currently, we're paying over $45,000 a month base pay for, for legal services. We don't have that many lawsuits. We don't have that many legal issues. And we, last week, the city council, at my urging, issued a request for proposal to get competitive bids for the legal work. We could have an in-house attorney that costs a lot less, or we could simply get another law firm to, to, to provide our legal services.
Yeah.
Now, here's the problem. The problem is with the city attorney. The city attorney deals with people. And if there's a lawsuit, the city attorney gets to hire his law firm to handle the lawsuit. And they make money with lawsuits.
Yeah.
So if a city attorney is giving advice to the city council, interacting with the community, the, the city attorney can say, we're not gonna do that. And, and have a hard-nosed approach. And that generates a lawsuit, which then he gets to, he or she gets to handle with their law firm.
Correct. And they get the billable hours.
They get the billable hours.
Yes.
And it's, and it's huge. As the originating attorney, you get, you get credit for, even if you're not working on the case.
Correct. So you had suggested an RFP.
An RFP. And to make sure we have a, we don't have a conflict situation where the city attorney is benefiting from lawsuits.
Was the council split on doing that? Or what was their take on it?
Oh, it was, it was split. The, what I call the remnants of the old guard, if you will. They hired BBK and they're not gonna do anything to interfere with BBK's contract.
Even though you've gone from 300,000 a year to 12 million dollars. And again, numbers.
Over, over a few years.
Over a few years. But it's a substantial increase, clearly.
Yeah, I think this year is about a million, too, in legal fees. My goodness.
Yeah, that's crazy. And I think we can agree, right, that a request for proposal is you're just getting a couple of competitive quotes to keep the existing guy honest. Now, that doesn't mean you're going away with the current
That's right.
Setup of BBK.
They could, they could submit a request, a proposal.
Yeah.
And continue providing services.
Yeah, exactly. And some people might say, well, you just don't know what you're gonna get, right? When you put it out there and you open this up for other people to bid on.
Legal services are a commodity. There are, there are dozens of firms that would be standing in line for the privilege of, of representing San Clemente. This is not a, an exotic specialty. There's hundreds and hundreds and hundreds of municipal expert, law experts in these law firms in Southern California. So that, getting a qualified law firm is not a problem.
And how hard is it to put a request for proposal out and to get these guys to do it, right?
Very, very easy. Very easy. Like, like you're doing RFP for, for any service that you want.
Yeah.
You, you let it be known to the community and those that want to bid on, whether it's a construction job, a tree trimming job, or legal services.
Yeah. And in most businesses, right, you're gonna get a couple quotes. That's just smart business. You don't just marry one relationship and call it a day. So what about the city, the city manager? Do the, is the, the city manager is not an elected position, correct?
That's right. We have a city manager, form of government, the city council's elected, and the five members appoint a city manager who manages the city, hires the department heads, oversees all of the operations, police, fire, roads, parks.
Okay. We recently had a, a turnover, a changing of the guards with the city manager position.
Correct.
So the prior city manager took a job in another city.
In another city.
And in comes a new city manager.
Right.
What does he come into?
Well, he comes into a, a city that is, you know, already established. The, the departments are up and running. He just has to manage the affairs. But the, the city manager's import, is a very important function. They've run the city. They've run the day-to-day operations.
Yeah.
And, and we've had some issues with management in our city. For example, last year, right before the sports softball season was open, 150 families had their kids ready to play softball. And the day before the season opened, the city's manager shut down the parks because there was a grass berm lip between the, the dirt part of the infield and the grass part of the outfield that was about an inch and a half high. And someone decided at the parks department that softball may hit that bump and, and bounce up and, and potentially hit somebody.
Wow.
Shut down the parks the day before the season opened without telling anybody, without announcing it. We had a city council member that, that said, one of our pro-business council members, who said, we can fix that problem in a day. He said, I, she said, I've got a contractor that can come and in five hours, fix all the fields for nothing so they can open tomorrow. What was our city manager's position? No, we're gonna shut them down for a month while I hire a contractor and pay him $30,000 to do that job. What's wrong with, you know, that's bureaucracy in action. When, when we should move quick and solve problems for the citizens of San Clemente and do it easily and quickly.
And the city manager has the authority to shut down.
Yeah.
They can do that. They run the city.
They run, the manager runs the city. Like the city manager decided to put tons of sand in our, in our skate parks when, when COVID was there because they didn't want kids getting too close to each other. Crazy.
That's
And, and, and put fencing around our beaches at the, at the pier bowl because someone might get close to one of them. Crazy.
Wow.
We had another management problem, which is really irks me, was the beach trail, the Mariposa Bridge, which is about 1,000 feet long, beautiful beach trail, the, one of the gems of our city, the gems of Southern California. That, that beach bridge made out of iron, was only 15 years old, should have lasted 50 years. But the, our manager didn't have a, a maintenance program. So it started rusting. And the manager got a report to say that that bridge is subject to imminent collapse. Imminent collapse with hundreds of people on the beach trail, potentially threatening the lives of our citizens.
I hope people realize, yeah.
Yeah. Well, and to go on, the, the manager had authority for $25,000, anything over that, he had to get city council approval.
Okay.
The city manager, on his own, hired a, a construction firm, paid $300,000 to go in and shore up the bridge and didn't tell the council. I, I found out about it, walking on the beach trail and seeing all the work going on. So what's going on here? I said, we got a report that says our citizens are subject to, to potential death because this bridge could collapse at any moment. And the council didn't know. That's a management issue. And, and so the council has oversight. But we need to, we need to make sure that the managers we hire are, are proactive. They're, that they're smart and that they know how to do the job.
So the current, the current city manager that filled in for the
Sean Joyce is an ex-city manager of a number of cities, a lot of experience. And
But he's just an interim, right? He's a temporary position.
He's a temporary position. The city's hired a consultant to, to do a, a selection process to identify potential candidates. And that process is going on right now.
Okay, okay. And again, the public or the city of San Clemente doesn't really have much say if at all in that, correct?
Well, the council will. The city, the city, the city's elected representatives, the city council.
Correct.
We make the decision on who gets hired. We've hired a consultant to simply gather the resumes and put them together.
Okay.
Another example of consultants.
Yeah.
We had to pay someone around $30,000 to, to gather those resumes. My position, we could have had the city HR department notify the municipal publications, the, the Daily Journal and various publications. We'd have had, we'd have had 100 applications. But no, we have to hire a consultant. And that's one of my, that's one of my beefs with the city. We have to almost hire a consultant for every decision. I call it government by proxy.
Yeah.
We hire department, managers that select department heads. They ought to, they ought We hire department, uh, managers that select department heads. They ought to, they ought to think about their job, make recommendations and implement it. And it may not be perfect.
Correct.
They could make mistakes, but mistakes are okay, but make a decision.
Yeah, make a decision. Yeah.
But, but, but we need to do it instead of saying, I don't want to make a decision. I'm going to hire a consultant. So if something goes wrong, I can blame them. And, and then I don't have to do my job because they're doing it for me.
Yeah.
Crazy.
Crazy. So the importance of the city manager, I want to stay on that topic for a second. With the changing of the guards or the, you know, reelection and the new potential members coming into the city council, how is that going to work with regards to the, to the overlay or the, is it going to be the existing council members that select? Or is that too close of a timeframe? Is it the new members and?
It's a.
And what does that timing look like?
It is a close timeframe and, uh, we have an election in about three weeks. We have three spots that are open. Uh, and, uh, the, the mindset among the council members from the conversations we've had is that the new council should be making the decision on the new city manager.
Okay.
Uh, I'm the only incumbent running, so I may or may not be on the council at that time. Uh, one of our other council members is running for state assembly. If he's elected, uh, then that position will, will be elected through a special election or appointed by the city council. We have an option there. And, uh, so the new council will be working with the new city manager. So the idea is this, the new council should probably be making that decision. And with the election being three weeks away, I don't think we could, we haven't gotten the resumes yet, but by the time we get them, schedule the appointments, conduct interviews and make a decision, it would be very difficult to do before the new council takes place.
What's the turnover process like? Is it the vote takes place? The new elected official step in immediately after, or do you have a, do you have a window of time?
There's a little window. There, it's not immediate because once the election takes place, the, uh, election results have to be certified. And that normally takes three weeks, two, three, four weeks. And, uh, then once the election's certified, then the new council members need to be sworn in and, and then attend the next regularly scheduled meeting as the elected council members.
Okay, okay. Again, pivoting a little bit, talk to me about the homeless situation. I know, again, a very hot topic in San Clemente and something that people are very passionate about is homeless and what to do with it. And I know it's a, you know, a pretty broad question and.
It's a broad question. It's a difficult question.
Very difficult.
The, uh, the Supreme Court has sort of held our, tied our hands on what we can do with the homeless people. We, we, we can't have people camping on, on our beach and in our parks and on, in the parking places. You know, if you look at Los Angeles, Oakland, San Francisco, it's a disaster. What, the defecating on the streets, needles, filth, it's, it's disgusting. It's terrible. And we don't want San Clemente to become like Los Angeles.
No.
Uh, the, basically the law says if you're going to take someone that is homeless off the street, you have to have it somewhere to put them. Uh, some advocates, uh, some of those running for council now say, we need permanent housing and we did it in San Clemente. Others have said, this isn't a San Clemente problem. It's a regional problem that affects San Clemente, Dana Point and all of the surrounding cities. So the, the concept is, which is almost universal, the concept is we need a regional approach to homelessness. We need shelters, temporary shelters, not permanent shelters. Cause if you have permanent shelters for homeless, now you've just, you've created a permanent class of people dependent solely on the government for everything. Uh, and that's problematic for a lot of people because individuals need to take responsibility and care for themselves. I mean, I'm not responsible to take care of your kids. You are. And, and I shouldn't be responsible for everyone else, but you help where you can. That's compassion and that's good. But, uh, it needs to be addressed on a regional basis. Now, a lot of the people that are homeless, we've got about 45 people that are homeless. They, uh, and I asked, I said, what's the makeup of these people? Uh, how many have mental issues? How many have drug issues? How many simply have economic issues? And it's about a third. So we have two full-time homeless advocates. Two full-time homeless, they do nothing but communicate with these same 45 people. Every day, seven days a week.
Two full-time people paid by the city, sa, city salary, et cetera, et cetera. Okay.
Absolutely, absolutely. Uh, and, and, and nothing, nothing changes. The mental health is, is a serious issue. The people are disturbed and, uh, everyone has families. It's too bad their families don't reach out and help them. But a lot of people have burned the bridges with their family. They can't go back. But there's a group in central Orange County, the, the Be Well organization. They, they've finished a mental health facility in the Santa Ana, Tustin area where they have a hundred beds and they have mobile vans, mental, mental health vans where they go out and talk to people. And if they really have mental problems and can't care for themselves, they're transported to the facilities where they can stay up to a month to get mental health counseling and other services. They're expanding their operation. They're building a 250-plus bed on the Great Park in Irvine and expanding their Be Well mobile mental health, uh, facilities. I'd like to get those people down south and, and servicing San Clemente. Now, the sheriff's department has a policy where there's sort of a, a line where how far you can take people if you, once you take them off the street.
Yeah.
And they're sort of prohibited from going north. I'd like to see us expand, have those mental health Be Well vans come down to South Orange County, San Clemente, Dana Point, San Juan Capistrano and talk to people and help them where they can. And, and if they need a place to stay, take them to these mental health facilities where experts are there to really help people that are in need.
Absolutely. So when you moved to San Clemente 21 years ago, was, was it the sheriff department or was, was it the city? Did the city have control over the police department at that time?
At that time, the city contracted with the county sheriff's department to, uh, provide police services. Uh, the city used to have its own police department, but about, I think around 25 years ago, maybe even a little longer, they contracted with the county sheriff's department.
So I don't know if the name rings a bell. Tom Davis is, uh, retired chief of police, a very close friend of ours and he's, uh, he's come in and talked to us before and he, you know, kind of said the same thing with regards to the city manager and how they run San Clemente. But he had mentioned when he came to San Clemente, the reason he chose this city to essentially be the chief of police was because the city had his back. And he said at the time when he came down, I think was the maybe mid, mid nineties, there was a lot of civil unrest. There was a lot of things that are happening. There were a lot of things happening then that are similar to now. And he felt that San Clemente had his back. He knew it. He said, you know, it was a town where people loved the cops. Is it like that anymore? Or is it back to what you kind of said, there's still like a division between like who feels what about the police department and about the sheriff's department?
I, I think there's still a, 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 a strong love for our, our police officers. I, I think they're respected. I think they're admired. But we have a growing contingent of people that don't feel that way. Uh, even on the city council, we have city council members that have marched with Black Lives Matter with fists raised in the air, wanting to defund the cops. This last year, there was a bla, a small Black Lives Matter protest in South San Clemente where a handful of, of protesters showed up, uh, and, uh, were on the sidewalk. And then they began getting into the street and then setting up cones in the street and then blocking traffic in the street. I went down to observe what would happen because I knew the, my potentially be a, an issue. And as a council member, I wanted to see how our police department's performing, our sheriff's department. And, uh, the, the, they were incredibly professional. They, they weren't at anyone's face. They, as, as the traffic began to be blocked, the sheriff then had a presence and instructed the people, please move out of the street. You're blocking traffic and, you know. And, uh, and over time, the, the protesters ignored the police. And when they did, they had a very professional, very precise response. And, um, and I was watching there, some thinking, man, the, the police are, they have restraint. They have respect. They're, they're dignified. They're, they're precise in their movements. And one of the other, uh, council members who happens, or not council members, candidates for city council who have, who happened to be down there watching the same thing, she came over to me as this was happening. I'm sitting there admiring the precision, the patience, the professionalism of our sheriff's deputies. And her response is, look, they're just amplifying the situation. They're, they're antagonizing these people. I said, they're doing their job. What, what are you talking about? So it's a mindset where you see the same thing. One person says, job well done. Another person says, how dare they do their job? Uh, this is terrible. They're terrible. And, but, but to answer your question, I think the police are respected and they need to be respected. And, um, and that's, uh, I, I feel strongly about that. That's why the deputy sheriff's association has endorsed me.
Yeah.
And, uh, you know, uh, the, the police are the last line. They are the line of defense between, you know, between utter anarchy and a civilized, peaceful society.
Correct.
We need to honor and respect our police officers. And we have rules in place for cops that don't do it right. Like, like, like all groups of, in society.
Yeah.
You know, most are good and there's a few bad apples. But believe me, we can deal with the bad apples. But you don't, you don't chop down the apple tree just because you've got an app, one every now and then. And that's very, very rare.
Absolutely. I gotta get your advice or your take on this. There was a gang or a group of Chilean nationals. What are they doing in San Clemente? Where do they come from?
They come from Chile. They come from Chile.
Right off the plane. Are they, are they?
No planes are crossing the border.
Wow.
We have open borders.
Wow.
We have open borders two years ago.
This is a true story. Chilean immigrants. Go on. This is, this is, this is crazy. This blew my mind.
This is happening. We've had in, in Talega, we've had, uh, uh, eight or 10 burglaries. They come in as a team. They go to the second story, the back of the house, break in, they're in and out of, in, in three or four minutes. It's been going on, not only in San Clemente, in Orange County. They call it the Chilean gang because the people that are organized from, from Chile. A couple of years ago, we didn't have this problem. But now we have open borders and the last two years are, we have five million people in the last 18 months have come across our border. Who's come across our border? Chileans in the South Americans and, and from a hundred other nations around the planet. And, and they got to support themselves. So how do they do that? They steal, they steal, you break into your home. And, and not just Talega, the, the, the break-ins have happened in the rest of San Clemente as well. But thank God the police department has, has been proactive and one of their undercover units, it's been to traveling, patrolling the area.
Yeah.
They, they spotted a vehicle last week. They, they chased it. Uh, they, the car took off. Uh, they crashed up at, uh, Pluta and La Pa, uh, Saluda and La Pata area intersection. Four guys jump out of the vehicle and run. Police, uh, detained two of them.
Okay.
And, and there, there, there they were, part of the Chilean, uh, Chilean, uh, gang.
Wow.
But, but we, we, we have open borders. And as long as you have millions of people coming in that aren't employed, that have no skills, that, that probably come from the prisons of the nations that released them, we're going to have these problems. We have candidates running for city council that support open borders. You know, I like to say lower crime, lower inflation, lower food prices, lower gas price starts at the local level. We have candidates now that say, open borders are fine. Uh, and that's problematic for San Clemente.
Yeah, absolutely. One other thing I have to ask, I was born at San Clemente Hospital. Is, is it a good idea? What's your take on the current development proposal being proposed on De La Smares and the old San Clemente Hospital? It's being, I believe by, is it memorial? Memorial care, four stories, 250, 250 units, 20 low income properties. What's, what's your take on that? It's a hybrid type of facility, I believe. So I, I got a glimpse of it. Yeah. Talk to me about that.
You know, I, it's difficult for me to say too much about it other than, because if I, uh, say an opinion, I like it, I don't like it. I'm going to support it. I'm not going to support it. Then I'm, then I'm conflicted because I haven't, I haven't seen the application yet. I haven't seen the details.
Okay.
But what I do know is that, um, if the city were to, this is the one I understand, if the city says no to the low-cost housing, under the state laws, they're entitled to build low-cost housing. The more low-cost housing they have, the local restrictions on height goes away. They could literally have, uh, instead of, as you, as you mentioned, a handful, 20 or so.
Yeah.
Low-cost, they could have 50% and go up seven, eight, nine stories, block the ocean view of, of, of a vast number of our citizens. So I haven't seen, I haven't seen the proposal, um, but, uh, and I can't really opine, but that, you're right, that the hospital land uh, was, um, shut down because it wasn't economically viable for the operator. They, well, the city has, has looked at potentially creating a hospital district. We've, we've, uh, talked to other hospital operations around Southern California, saying, you want to come into town and build, rebuild the hospital? Uh, zero response from anybody, uh, unless the city's willing to spend $300 million of our own, of our money to put them in business. Uh, that's, that, that's not going to happen. Uh, so unfortunately, uh, we're stuck with, um, with the, um, Mission Hospital.
Okay.
With a little bit of a tra, uh, hospital, uh, ambulance drive to get there. But, uh, the project's moving forward and we'll see. It hasn't been to the council yet, but it's, it's coming. And, uh, well, when we get all the facts, we'll make an, an informed decision.
Got it, got it. High level view. I think we could probably wrap it up on this. Where do you see San Clemente in the next 10 years? Of course, we know it's going to be developed, right? We know there's going to be projects and new, you know, developments coming into town. Again, I know a tricky question and it's a fine line with development and not overdeveloping.
I don't think it's going to be much of a prob, I think what we're going to have in 10 years, Jeff, is the same quality of life we have now. The sound, the town's built out. We don't have any vacant lots. We have a little bit of infill, but that's it. We are built. Uh, the, the, probably the, the thing that could impact us the most in the next 10 years is the state laws that are coming down by our left-leaning legislature who says, uh, we want, we want more housing. We don't want you to expand into the high desert or places where there is land that's affordable, where people can afford a home. We want you to go into our existing cities and we're going to allow a residential lot to be subdivided four ways and build homes on four, on a hundred and fifty, a hundred by a 50-foot lot, like they've done, and have other rules that, that take away local zoning controls. That's the threat. But, but, and, and unless the state comes in and decimates our town and other, other cities in Southern California, uh, I think our town's going to remain a beautiful, quality of life place to live where, where we, where the beaches are, are clean, the streets are, are paved, the landscaping is beautiful. We're, we're built out. I see no more development. It's what the state can impose on us. And that's their goal is to high-rise, uh, make us like Beijing, China with high-rise, affordable, uh, government-funded housing. Uh, we're resisting that because, uh, it, it, you know, central control over people's lives is not a good thing. People have to be free to live where they want and enjoy the quality of life that they can create and, and, and afford.
Amazing, amazing. Alrighty. City council member, uh, hopefully soon to be reelected, Steve Noblock. Thank you so much for sitting down with me. I really appreciate it.
Grateful. Great program and Godspeed to you guys.
Alrighty. Thank you so much, Steve. Appreciate it so much. Alrighty. Take care. Thank you for listening in. Join us for another episode next week, coming to you from our studio on Delmar and downtown San Clemente. Make sure you follow us on Instagram, at the San Clemente Podcast and subscribe to us on YouTube and Spotify so you never miss an episode.